Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, January 27, 2020. Prior to our roll call this evening, I'd like to let anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any item on tonight's agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, to kindly fill out a speaker request form there in the foyer just outside the back of the room here, and we'd be happy to get you on at the appropriate time. With that being said, we'd like to have a roll call, and working tonight's meeting is our executive assistant with Scott. Ruth, if you would call the roll, please.
Morris?
Here.
Finnucan?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Eight present.
Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. We're on Item C. We approve tonight's agenda. There is one deletion to the agenda, and that is under E., Presentations, we are removing the first proclamation, School Choice Week. This is being removed at the request of one of our aldermen. Also, we've had several calls to ask me to remove that, and so we are going to remove that as a proclamation tonight. Are there any other additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Morris. Any discussion? Roll call.
Morris?
Yes.
Finnucan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
The agenda is approved. Now we get to public participation. Again, to remind anyone who would like to speak, if you would, fill out a speaker request form. Don't wait until we get to that item on the agenda. Kindly bring those now to our executive assistant, Ruth Scott, and we'll make sure that we get you on in the proper order. First on the agenda is George Joseph Mitchell. And if anyone who would like to speak, please kindly come up to the podium, as Joe is there, and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Joe?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I stand before you as a 40-year resident of this community. I stand before you as a father of an African-American 13-year-old. My heart is still troubled about what we saw in this community in September of last year. My heart is troubled, but it was not shocked that there was no bill for Officer Wees putting a chokehold on Alante McDowell. My heart is still troubled because I am concerned that justice is not going to take place. Many of us just recited the Pledge of Allegiance that ends with liberty and justice for all. And it seems like somehow we say those words but don't believe in justice for all. I'm here to employ on the city council and those present, justice for all. And Alante McDowell deserves justice. I stand before you as the pastor of New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, who has collaborated in many ways for many years to do great things in this community, to be the first to say we'll open up to have conversations of healing and reconciliation. We started the beloved community so we could get together and talk about how we can live together. We started the Unity March so we could walk together and build community. Now, many of us are gathered here tonight seeking justice. We understand that there is internal investigation going on with the DeKalb Police, and we are seeking justice. Officer Sergeant Wees cannot go back on the street like nothing ever happened. If we're holding Alante McDowell accountable for breaking the law, Sergeant Wees needs to be held accountable for breaking the law. That's how justice works. And if we want to heal as a community, if we want to move forward as a community, there's a community of people here who have not seen justice in a long time, and we deserve to see justice. And so I implore you as all the persons, city council, manager, chief of police, please do the right thing. Let this community know that justice applies for everybody. Let this community know that everybody has civil rights, and they will not be violated. No matter your skin color, no matter if you break the law, no matter your social economic status, no matter your gender, justice applies to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your views on this matter. And I just want to thank you on behalf of this community. I've been here a long time. You've been here a long time. Your dad has been here a long time, and I just appreciate everything you've done and what you continue to do for the city. Now, I know you've got to run because you're going to teach a class or something, but I do appreciate your thoughts. Thank you very much. Okay, I have no other folks who would like to speak to, at this point, under public participation, so we'll move right along to Presentations. We've amended the number of Presentations to be just one, and that is Barb City Manor Annual Report. We have Executive Director Maureen Garrity. Maureen, if you'd come up and speak and give your annual report on behalf of an organization that you know and love so well, Barb City Manor. Maureen?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Smith, city council members, city staff, and good people of DeKalb. On behalf of the Barb City Manor residents, staff, and board of directors, I am delighted to be here tonight to present Barb City Manor's 2019 Year-End Report. 2019 was an extraordinary year for Barb City Manor as we celebrated our 40th anniversary. Barb City Manor Retirement Home opened its doors February 1, 1979, with the mission to provide a safe and affordable retirement living option for low-to-moderate-income seniors in our community. Since then, Barb City Manor has been a vital part of so many families and friends' lives, offering a home-like environment for their loved ones. Throughout Barb City Manor's history, the city of DeKalb has been a supportive partner. The DeKalb Public Hospital buildings have been the perfect location for the retirement homes' operations. The city's financial commitment over the years has been instrumental in helping us to keep up with building safety codes and remain competitive in the ever-changing world or field of senior living. Coincidentally, Barb City Manor's service agreement with the city of DeKalb expired June of 2019. The TIF district funding that was the source of the financial assistance Barb City Manor received from the city the past 20 years also expired. Barb City Manor board members and staff worked closely with the city manager's office, Mayor Smith, city council members, to develop an agreement that would provide peace of mind to Barb City Manor residents and their families and funding assistance for major building projects. The outpouring of support from the community throughout the negotiation process bolstered us along the way and will never be forgotten. Three building projects were on the to-do list for 2019. First, the East Wing Fire Escape Replacement Project that was initiated in 2017 was completed November 15, 2019. The second project was replacement of the boiler valves and boiler pumps to bring us up to date with new boiler safety standards. The final project for 2019 is an upgrade of the electrical circuitry in the Hays Wing. This project is nearly finished. Financing for all three projects were to come from TIF 2 monies, and with guidance from the city manager's office, Barb City Manor was able to secure all the remaining TIF 2 funds that were earmarked for the Barb City Manor building projects. And that total is $249,000, excuse me, $249,039, which is a grand total indeed from our perspective. As I reflect on the past year, I struggled to find the words to express my appreciation for all that we have accomplished together. It truly has been an extraordinary year, and on behalf of the entire Barb City Manor family, I sincerely want to thank each and every one of you for helping to make it so. Thank you.
It has been quite a journey and quite a stretch, and we appreciate that. Are there any comments or questions of Maureen? If not, thank you very much. Appreciate that report. Moving right along to F., Appointments. There are none tonight. Now we arrive at Item Number G. on the, or Item G. on the agenda. This is the Consent Agenda. This is an item, an agenda item that is enacted by one motion. I will read the discussion of these items unless any member of the council asks that I remove any of the items. Not seeing anybody to do that, let me read each of the items on tonight's consent agenda. Number one, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of January 13, 2020. Number two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of January 13, 2020. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through January 27, 2020 in the amount of Number four, investment and bank balance summary through November 2019. Number five, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through November 2019. Number six, FY 2019 Human Services Funding Report for the fourth quarter. Number seven, the Freedom of Information Act FOIA report for December 2019. And finally, the 2019 City Manager Fee Waiver Report. Those are the items on the consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Morris. Any questions or comments? If not, roll call, please.
Finnucan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
The consent agenda is approved as printed and as read. There are no public hearings at tonight's city council meeting. We move along to considerations. Number one, consideration of a tax increment financing TIF funding request from the Bae family for the rehabilitation of the property located at 206 East Lincoln Highway. Before we have council discussion, or the possibility of council discussion, I'd ask city manager Bill Nicholas to speak to this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll do so briefly. At the last regular meeting on January 13, the council heard a proposal from Rosa Bae in behalf of the Bae family for some TIF funding assistance, for some remodeling that the family wanted to do on the second floor of 206 East Lincoln Highway. And after some discussion by the council, there seemed to be general support for helping in some fashion, but the city manager was asked to come back with some options, and I've done my best in that regard. In your background report on pages three and four, I've given you three options. One was a 30% TIF funding, that's percent of the overall project. Another one is 40%, 50%. And as I presented these, I also broke down what that number might be, and further, in terms of the time for repayment, if we were just looking at the projected property tax alone, or if we were looking at a combination of property tax and sales tax, and there are different outcomes for those. So at this point, it's back to the council, and I await whatever guidance you'd like to give.
Okay, and I think... Thank you, Bill. Okay, I think that we have discussed this quite a bit at our last meeting. Also, it's been extensively reported by area media. I think what we need to do to now is to decide if, in fact, we want to support this project. There seemed to be consensus at our last meeting that there was. We ask that the matrix be brought back at 30%, 40%, and 50%. The council is simply being asked for direction tonight to our city manager so he can bring the resolution and the development agreement back for consideration on February 10. With that, I entertain any thoughts, any motions, whatever. Alderman McAdams?
As many of you may know, I have an ideological bent against TIF funding, but I listen to the ward, and the ward overwhelmingly supports the project. So I've decided that I'm going to support the project, but we, as a board, have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure those TIF funds are spread wide and that everyone has an opportunity. And I also think that we're setting a precedent by the percentage amount. So I would urge the council to support the 30%, and that way we've set the precedent that future projects, 30% would be available. And that's a good number. That would help us to fund a lot of different projects and really revitalize the entire downtown.
Any additional thoughts? Alderman Verbic?
I also echo 30%, but also, part of the feedback I've received is, when did we change the maximum amount from 25%? So I think at some point, I'd like to see council discuss what should be that new maximum as a gauge or range of, is 30% satisfactory? Do some research from other communities and find out, is that really the rate that is acceptable to spur on more projects? I think is my intent, so I'll support the 30% with an eye on a new maximum being offered of 25%.
Alderman Morris?
I wanted to bring up the idea that I wonder if focusing on percentages isn't necessarily the most reasonable value to focus on. I wonder if we shouldn't be considering a different metric such as the return on investment over time allotted. I think that if we're looking at return on investment, we may begin to see that, you know, if, as these options demonstrate, we have a return on investment that's completed within, as these, as these options demonstrate, they show them being completed in, I'm trying to find the spot right now, sorry, but in...
Five and a half, seven or nine.
Five and a half, seven or nine years. And so I wonder if, if we're considering this from the greatest added value to the community perspective, if the most important metric isn't the return to investment to the community over a certain period of time. So I just want to throw that out there and have us recognize that perhaps there's no relevance to the percentage we're offering, except, you know, that that is a financial benefit to the requister. And in that same vein, perhaps consider a lifetime financial cap to one investor, and keep in mind that we are spreading the opportunity for projects in that sense. I think we would be really remiss to pass up a project at all at this point with the infrequency that they are presented to us.
Given the options that we ask for, and given the background information that has been provided this council, is any of that, does any of that background information give you enough information to, on which to base your recommendation that we go in your direction as opposed to another alderman's suggestion that we go at 30?
Sure. And I think the point is the number of years of return on investment and recognizing that although we may have funded other projects to the 33% amount, we funded them to the tune of $1 million. And this project is a much smaller project, and as such, we are supporting one individual who is doing this, but we are also supporting the entire community as an investment in the community. But this one individual is really only being compensated, you know, to the tune of, it demonstrates in these three options, but, you know, $100,000, $200,000, and, you know, which is substantially less in total than $1 million. And so I just want us to keep that in mind and recognize that if we are going to have a fair distribution of this wealth, which is the community's funds, that we are going to distribute for the benefit of the community, that we ought to be considering, well, this project benefits the community, the project isn't going anywhere, it's going to live in the community forever, and we get to retain that value. So we're only helping someone, you know, a very little bit, and the percentage may not be relevant when we've helped someone else for $1 million.
I'm afraid that what you're saying and what Alderman Verbic is saying are sort of flying in the face of each other, but I, but before we complete this conversation, Alderman Finnucan?
Well, you know, the other thing I think we need to take into consideration is, with what Ms. Bae stated at our last meeting, was that for them to be able to do it, that the 30% funding wasn't, was not going to be able to do it for them. And if that happens, then we get absolutely nothing back out of this project. So we need to, I think we need to at least entertain the notion that we may have to fund at a higher percentage. I think I'll align myself with Karen on this one. You know, the Bae's are not a fly-by-night company that's coming in here who's never been in DeKalb before. You know, they've been in business here in DeKalb for 45 years, I think, isn't it, at least, with several ventures that have, that have come along and have lasted very long times. So I think we need to take that into consideration, too. I would lean towards 50%, particularly if we did, you know, I noticed in the background it says a potential of a 10-year term rather than a 20 for repayment with the clawback. And I think that, as Carolyn said, this is going to stay here, it'll continue to generate the additional property revenues, and if, in the long run, they're able to renovate and re-operate themselves or some other entity, the restaurant, the sales tax revenues that will come along with that. So I think I would lean towards the 50% funding.
Alderman Smith?
I'm going to agree with both aldermen to my right. You know, that 50% is probably, as we look at this project, we're looking not only at renovation of the first floor, but it has to occur something on the, excuse me, the second floor, has to be carryover to the first floor, which is going to benefit the potential leasing or the reopening of the property. So I think a 50% is not unreasonable in this case, given the dollar amount.
So you're looking at actual dollars, 162 up to 271,000. You're looking at the dollars as opposed to the percentage?
Correct, of the overall project and the benefit of the project. I mean, a second-story renovation versus a total building redo is probably, you know, like Alderman Morris indicated, you know, I guess maybe we're getting more bang for our buck this way, because sooner or later, someone's going to come into that property. If they see that the first, excuse me, the second, I got my ups and downs today, the second floor is renovated, they may look at entering into the lower space quicker, knowing that some work has already been done.
No, I understand. Believe me, I understand. Alderman Favor?
So my question was, what's the minimum percentage that you needed to be able to do the project? And I believe when we spoke, it was 40%. Is that still the... So I would be in favor of adjusting from 30 back up to 40%, because that's what's required to get the project done. That's what we're here to do, is we're here to make sure that we're supporting you and supporting the community, and we're doing this project, we're not spending any more money than is required to get the project done, and that then gives us additional TIF money that we can spend on other projects, which I've said multiple times from this microphone, if you have a project, if you want to invest in the city of DeKalb, let us know what your project is. We're happy to support you. We're not just giving the money to one or two different developers in DeKalb. The city of DeKalb is open for business. We want to support anyone. So I would go to the 40%. I would support that amount. The Bae's are happy with that amount. We're getting the project done. Every council member is happy with that amount. The reason we don't have a fixed percentage, because in the past, if somebody came in and said, "I need 26%," we had 25%, we said, "No." "But all I need is 26," "No." So I will take my business to your neighbor. And we realized, and we spent a lot more of the taxpayers' money because we didn't want to hear what somebody coming to DeKalb wanting to invest in DeKalb, what it would take to bring their business here. We just said, "Nope, we've got a rule, 25% can't do it." I'm willing to, and I think everybody up here is willing to, listen to your project. We've had a couple of great projects. They've, you know, the plan broke down, it didn't get executed, but we've had several projects that have come to DeKalb, very exciting projects. We're looking for investments. We want to rebuild the downtown.
Pardon my, yeah, pardon my down-home vernacular, but what I see coming here is to split the difference, big time. So any other comments before? I would entertain a motion from one of you to, to go with the 30, the 25, the 40, the 50, whatever.
I think Mike had his hand up first.
Yes. Alderman Verbic?
Has there been an inspection done on the property? Full, complete, no surprises?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's completely gutted upstairs. There's nothing left to the imagination, and we could see everything. Another consideration, we didn't get into the, much into the design of the four apartments, but if you have people upstairs and you don't know what's going to happen downstairs, but you want to make sure that they have a safe, two actually, safe passageways to an exterior location, and so that was part of the design as well. So Tracy was, Alderman Smith was, was referencing how it might grow into the first floor. In that sense, it does, so there are two shafts, if you will, stair shafts that would go outside directly from the upstairs. So they, there would need to be worked on, obviously, to do that in the first level.
Any additional comments? Alderman Perkins?
What's the payback been on some of the projects that are going on right now, the payback timeframe?
Yeah, you know, we had 20-year terms, like for corners, well, actually, it's 50 years, but it'll be paid back under 20 at the pace it's going. It's early, it's just a couple, couple years in, but at the rate that the rents and so forth are fueling cash flow. Some of the more, the better-known projects are still very fresh. Plaza DeKalb, just, you know, the largest portion of that, space-wise, is still not occupied, and the store to the east is occupied, Jabra, and upstairs, a couple nice apartments, those are, are fully occupied and flowing some money. It's too early to tell, but the management is aggressive and will, I think we can trust pay those back well in advance. Then there are some others, like the, the Egyptian Project, a not-for-profit, and their, their hope is to pay that back on schedule. So it's a mixed bag. Alderman Perkins, at this point, it's fairly fresh to make an estimate.
So comparing apples and apples, and if I understand it correctly, then the options here, option one would pay back in 1.6 years for these projects. Option two would be 2.1, and option three would be 2.65. Confessed with 20 years on the other ones, is that right?
Yeah, they're 20 years. Well, that's, the council can make it any term, but that's been the term. And also, I would urge the council to look at just the property tax alone, even though it's, it's important to note that when the first level is occupied, and we know it's going to be occupied in the next 20 years, and hopefully the next 20 days or so, or 20 months, certainly. But this is a property tax TIF, and, and the project is upstairs. I think it would stand on its own in terms of EAV, if you just look at the property tax. And even then, I think as Alderman Morris mentioned and others have mentioned, all of these can fit within a 10-year term, whether it's a 40%, 30%, or 50%. a ten-year term, whether it's a forty percent, thirty, or fifty percent.
You damage your question, Craig?
And I'm just trying to make sure I've gotten this straight, then, so, so this pays back much quicker than any of the other ones, then?
Correct.
And in real, real simple terms?
Correct.
I mean, it pays back in half the time?
Correct.
Or less? Okay.
Alderman Fanouken.
City Manager Nicholas, are you looking for a motion or just a consensus for where we'd like to go?
As this is a consideration, it really shouldn't be a, a roll-call vote, but I, if someone would make a, as the mayor suggested, a suggestion.
Then I will, I will make that suggestion, that we, we go with a forty percent with a ten-year payback and, and the clawback included in the agreement, and I think that if, I think most of the council would agree to that here.
Well, we'll see.
So, again, you know, if we need to make a motion and, and formalize, then I'll make that motion.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Verbic, that we fund the Baye project to the tune of forty percent with a ten-year clawback?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
No.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Forty percent, Bill, you have that direction. I trust this satisfies the Baye family, and you can go ahead and, as you suggest in the background information, bring the resolution of the development agreement back for consideration at our February ten meeting.
Will do, thank you.
Okay. Okay, now we move to item J, resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2020-009, authorizing an amendment to Resolution 2018-138, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Northern Illinois University for the coordination of integrated transit services to include advertising on fixed route vehicles. Before City Manager Nicholas explains this item, I'd entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I want to ask, yeah, I already thought about it. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Fanouken, City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Gave you a lot of background information, and then there's also the text of the proposed intergovernmental agreement as amended, and then there's a fairly lengthy, color graphic proposed Exhibit B, I don't know if you could wade through the, all the background to get to that, but that pertains specifically to advertising on the DeKalb public transit vehicles. And the, the whole point of this conversation this evening, and this particular resolution, is that the current intergovernmental agreement has been silent on the topic of policies and procedures pertaining to advertising on our, our fixed route transit vehicles, and so there's a proposition here. There are details, which I did not reference in my, my summary, dealing with a variety of, of approved and not approved types of advertising. The proposed policy, before it got to me to get to you, was vetted at NIU internally, at the department level, and then also by their corporate counsel, and then it was, one of the early drafts were, were reviewed by the former city attorney, and they come, so it comes back to you, it started there, by the way, John, and then, so now it comes back to you. The, one point, other, other than the specifics about what is in, what is in alarm, both the city and NIU have access to twenty-five percent of, back to percents, of, of the advertising space on, on the buses, twenty-five each, and then fifty percent is, is set aside for commercial advertising by private entities, not-for-profits, that want to advertise their services to, to the community, because these buses get around. We, we recommend this resolution to you and the policy behind it, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Alderman Morris.
So, now that I understand better after our communication, twenty-five percent of the advertising is for the city to advertise things?
Yes, and twenty-five for NIU, and fifty percent for all the others, commercial, not-for-profits, and so forth.
And we could allocate that to other nonprofit-type things that we liked as a city, like the basics, for example?
There are some, some pictures in the, the deep background, Exhibit B, that, I didn't bring them, but maybe you've seen them, the, everything from health and wellness types of advertising, call this number if you need assistance in this or that particular personal issue. There's specials at Aldi's, I should probably name it, specials at the grocery store, things like that. So anybody and everybody who will advertise within the policy constraints is welcome to do so.
Alderman Fanouken.
Bill, I noticed that it, you know, it mentions that it's on the routes, but does the background a couple of routes, too? And are they excluded from this? Shouldn't they be included as potential partner?
I believe, and Marcus is here tonight, is he not? There he is, Marcus is sitting there and can answer that. So the question was, are vac buses also included?
Yeah, Marcus, come on up.
I believe so, but we will.
Our transportation director, Marcus Cox.
Good evening. Currently, no, this is only for the Husky Line buses at this time. We're looking at the vac buses in the future, but for now, this only references Husky Line.
Okay, but I mean, that is something that we're going to look to, because obviously, they can use the additional revenue, too, if there's advertising on their buses.
Correct.
Okay, so it is something we're going to move towards, thank you.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That resolution is approved, thank you. Number two, Resolution 2020-010, authorizing an amendment to Resolution 2019-121, as it pertains to an agreement with the Illinois Convenience and Safety Corporation, IC and SC, and the addition of a bus shelter on Health Services Drive. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins, City Manager Nicholas, please.
The title pretty much tells it all, we, there's one bus shelter that's not listed on the previous amended resolution, and we'd like to add that, so that it falls under all of the provisions, including advertising that we talked about.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That resolution is approved. Number three, Resolution 2020-011, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and approving the purchase of water meters and radio transmitters from Badger Meter Incorporated and Core and Main in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman McAdam, seconded by Alderman Favor, City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you. I put a little extra background in here, just to explain how if a person's interested in this particular topic, we read water use in the community, and we've been doing it with radio reading devices for twenty-plus years, twenty-five years, and it's made a big difference, obviously, in terms of efficiency and also accuracy. And when we made that commitment back in the mid-nineties, we knew that once you invest in a certain style, you're sort of married to that for a while. Technology does, does change, and over the years, we have looked at other types, but the Badger meters that we have, which are, are everywhere, and have been operating well, we would still like to use for replacement purposes. But we've also found another manufacturer of, of the larger commercial meter sizes, and that's Core and Main, and that, previous to this year, not too distant past, we had done an RFP, and they had come up with a good price and a good product, and, and time has shown that they continue to be reliable. So, this year, we have the usual number, maybe more, we don't know, every year, we do encounter a certain number of meters, either residents or businesses say something's not right with this bill, and we go out and check, and sometimes we determine it's a meter. So we replace them, the, the average amount is somewhere around fifty thousand, so what we've got before you tonight is a resolution to continue with those two brands. As I mentioned in the background, more of that money, about thirty-five thousand, is probably going to be allocated for the Badger meter replacement, and fifteen thousand for Core and Main, and recommend your approval.
Any further discussion on this resolution request? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That resolution passes.
Thank you.
Is approved. Moving right along, number four, Resolution 2020-012, authorize a, a one-year extension to the conditional rezoning and planned development preliminary plan for a solar energy facility for Sunvest Solar Incorporated. This is proposed along the north side of Gerler Road, east of South First Street. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor, City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know from the background, it's almost exactly a year that the council approved an ordinance that granted rezoning to about twenty-six acres on the north side of Gerler, just east of South First Street, and that was to allow for a community solar garden to this particular vendor, Sunvest Solar. We knew at the time that they needed to get support from the state, variety of approvals, gave them a year with the possibility of another year extension, that had to come before the council. They were, in the first run at the state for approval, they were not selected in that first round by the Illinois Power Agency for a particular license, but they've reapplied there, they have some confidence that they will get through the second round. We've, we see no reason at the staff level why we shouldn't extend this as we had anticipated about a year ago. We like the idea, and we hope you will.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That resolution is approved, that's our last resolution request of the evening. We move right along to ordinances, K, ordinances, second reading, we have none this evening. However, we have several for first reading. The first one, number one, Ordinance 2020-005, amending Chapter thirty-five towing, Chapter fifty-two, offenses against public peace, safety, and morals, and Chapter sixty-four, smoking regulations to conform to new cannabis and tobacco laws. I'd entertain a motion to approve this ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdam, seconded by Alderman Morris, City Manager Nicholas, please.
In the late fall, when the council approved some cannabis ordinances, we recognized at the time, we had to go in and clean up some other ordinances that made passing references, or sometimes more detailed references, to cannabis. Those are noted in the title of this particular ordinance, and when we, this was discussed by the council at the last regular meeting, there was some conversation about whether we would, we would follow the state guidance in, in certain areas or not, and we had departed from that, and what we've done is bringing back an ordinance that, that conforms to the state law, which address, these, these particular passages address cannabis smoking and tobacco smoke shops by persons twenty-one years of age or older, and, and also the possession of cannabis paraphernalia by persons under twenty-one years of age. And so I believe this ordinance is now in line with the council's preference, happy to answer any questions you may have.
The background material was exhaustive on this particular request. We do have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? Alderman Fanouken.
I'd like to offer the amendment that we would remove the section that would allow the smoking of cannabis in smoke shops, smoking rooms, hotels, and nursing homes.
Is there a second to that motion? Hearing none? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
That ordinance does pass on first reading. Does any council member want to waive second reading this evening? If not, that will be brought back to our February ten meeting. I should have brought this up prior to the vote, but does, does this ordinance, and again, it was an exhaustive background, does this, we still have to talk about the hookah bar, do we not? And their BYLB request, wasn't that part and parcel of?
Now, now we're in the alcohol side, this is just the cannabis.
This was just the cannabis side, so that's going to be brought back at another meeting?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
We have a meeting of member of the liquor license holders next week, so.
Right, right, I know that, Bill, I just, I just wanted to make sure that what we had talked about as a, as a group prior, that we, that I didn't fail to see something that was not there.
Interestingly, the gentleman who was here at the last meeting, I believe he's the proprietor of the hookah bar.
Right, right.
I, I caught him afterward, and I said, I just asked him outright, would you consider allowing persons smoking marijuana in your smoke shop? He said, absolutely not. He said, I'm there to sell tobacco.
Right, right, yes, I remember him saying that.
That was interesting.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, let's go number two, Ordinance 2020-006, authorizing an amendment to Ordinance 2019-065 for the Northern Illinois University annual contribution for integrated transit services. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Fanouken, City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you. This is, I think, a cleanup item as well. There is more accurate information now to identify what NIU's portion of this particular service, the integrated transit services, is, and Marcus, very meticulous, and noted that, and thought we should amend the, the adopting ordinance accordingly, and there's a, a detailed chart to show what the difference is in terms of NIU's cost, and staff recommend your support for this. Also, this would include the Husky Safe Line as part of the NIU contribution.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Eight yes?
That ordinance does pass on first reading.
I'd like to move that we waive second reading and approve.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Smith, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That ordinance is passed as presented and as discussed. Number three, Ordinance 2020-007, amending the 2020 FY 2020 budget and approving the purchase of Genesis battery-powered hydraulic extrication tools in an amount not to exceed $21,700. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Chief McMaster has some very good background.
He sure does.
And I put in a little more than I usually do. This is supposed to be a summary. Took big chunks of it because people are always asking, "What are the jaws of life? What is that?" And it's more than one particular device. They're expensive. They do great things, but they are expensive, and we'd like to have them on all of our rigs, at least those that are responding on emergency calls, and we were thinking this year, we just would have to pass on our desire to replace one set of tools. And then, DeKalb County Community Foundation, as it has so many times, came to the rescue, and not just with a little bit, but almost 95% of the cost of this set of tools.
Wonderful.
$20,000. And so, thank you to DeKalb County Community Foundation. That left $1,700. We've got to do something about that. Chief McMaster volunteered to take it out of his salary. No.[729.01][729.01](Laughter) But to take it out of a line item which deals with small tools and so forth, thought he could spare that, particularly considering a payoff here. I support him in that, and we recommend to you your approval.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That ordinance does pass on first reading.
Like to move that we waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded by Alderman Verbic, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That ordinance is approved, and thank you for your generosity, Chief McMaster. Thank you.[798.44][798.44](Laughter) Okay, you know, thanks for that background. I will say, for the folks who perhaps go to the website to look at our agendas, the background information has just been fantastic, and it certainly, I know for the benefit of us, it really helps because we have to vote, but for just background information, it's fantastic. So, thank you very, very much to staff. Okay, let's go on to item number four, Ordinance 2020-008, proposing the establishment of an active special service area number 29 for the Market Square Shopping Center and providing for a public hearing and other proceedings in connection therewith. I'd entertain a motion to approve. So moved. Second. It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Smith. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Well, I think you will agree with my first sentence.
Absolutely.
Potholes are back. And for those in the audience and at home, or those who will eventually see this background, it's important to note that the city has no ownership or responsibility for the interior road network and also the main drive into Market Square Shopping Center, which is the biggest shopping center we have in the city of DeKalb, and Lowe's, and Walmart, and Best Buy, and a lot of others, very fine stores, many of them national retailers. It happens that that interior road system was anticipated in a very general way when a preliminary and a number of final plans were submitted back in the '90s and early 2000s. And there was a reciprocal easement agreement, which would allow shoppers from Walmart to go to Lowe's and back without having to pay a toll and so forth, but also that REA, we'll call it, noted response, initially noted responsibility, shared responsibility for the upkeep of those roadways. And generally speaking, each of the retailers had responsibility for the repair and the upkeep of their parking areas. And the REA, though, also included a general responsibility for upkeep of the general, the larger retention ponds and trees and so forth. Of significance to us tonight is the fact that somewhere along the way, some details fell out of those, that the many versions of this revised agreement, as new retailers came in and became part of the shopping center. And so, we found last year that when the potholes were becoming gaping holes and starting to eat up small vehicles and lots of tires, and people were angry with the city, not knowing that we didn't have responsibility for it. We had to do something, so we reached out to, in the form of a friendly invitation, to do the right thing, get together, figure it out. No surprise that didn't get met with overwhelming support. A second follow-up letter happened, and with a little more sense of urgency, and lots of pictures in front of each of the major retailers, and some went out and fixed their portion. And as it happens, their property line might go to the middle, of the center of the road, the center line. So, it looked like the coat of many colors, the patchwork, you saw one side, it looked like it had been repaired, and the other side, it didn't. And so, people now are really scratching their head, "What's going on here? Why not this side of the road?" Then, spring, and the pothole disaster was mitigated some while we're back, and we're back again to that weather where it hovers around 32, so there's freeze thaw, freeze thaw almost on a daily basis. Things are popping. We know no other vehicle here to get some cooperative cooperation, so what we're proposing is a special service area. And we have those in our communities. As you know, we just did a corporate levy, and we had some levies for cul-de-sacs and residential subdivisions and the like. Although, it's not unusual to have a special service area for a shopping center. The fact is, though, that there isn't one there. So, to cut to the quick, the, this particular ordinance proposes a special service area, and here's how it would work. What we basically would do is levy more tax in this particular area, and it has to be defined geographically, and then that tax goes to reimburse either city, or in our case, I would recommend that we hire the contracting out. Our city engineer, Zach Gill, has estimated square footages, done detailed estimates and assessments of, just looking at where we are now, what the proportionate responsibility is and so forth. And we come up with a number, and every year, you have to do that under the law. You can't just hit a number and let it ride for a period of years without justification. We would do that. We would get reimbursed. So, we'd have to come up with the money, but once the system starts, we'd have enough money in the budget to do a rotating repair. You can't just impose this, though, on the property owners. Property owners get a chance to attend a public hearing where we have to present what we're proposing. If the council should decide to go in this direction, and they get a chance to weigh in, and basically, it's a number of negative votes. So, if 51% or more sign a petition opposing it, then we cannot impose the special service area. So, it's real important in the selling of this, I guess you would say, that we have a reasonable amount of money, that otherwise, they might be compelled in a court of law to share a part of, and hopefully, reason will prevail. If not, there is something called a business district, which is a different animal, and we have to present that to you in another fashion, but our view from the staff level is the best and the year-in, year-out, most efficacious approach would be for us to go with a special service area, and that's what's before you tonight. We assume you would want to take this on to reading, so we gave you the background, gave you the proposition, gave you the numbers, showed you a chart in the background, and a map that shows who's involved in what, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Prior to that public hearing, in two meetings down the pike, would each and every business in Market Square be given a number of what that assessment in the special service area would be? In other words, a small business, like the Mexican restaurant out there, would know that this would cost them $600, whereas a Walmart and a Lowe's?
Well, the way it works is, your EAV is different, so you won't pay as much if you're smaller, as opposed to the largest, the 200,000-square-foot building out there versus a 10,000-square-foot outlaw. But to you, it might still be a chunk of money, but there's no other way to do it. That's how the law...
Right. No, I understand.
And based on your EAV, there's a number we want to get to that calculates to a certain rate increase, and that's how that works. That, that's just how in state law...
There's a maximum.
It's maximum, yeah.
For the rate, maximum for the rate, if we can't go above.
Right.
Okay. Any thoughts or comments? Alderman Smith?
City Manager, I've had several talks about this, and the complaints, I don't know how many they've received, but how many I've received are just, really has to facilitate this. I'm also a little concerned, you know, some of our heavier buses go down there. I don't know if it's safe for them to go down there almost anymore, and I would hate to be in a position that we can't service that area with some of our heavy equipment, both from a personal aspect. You know, I'm concerned, and I don't think we're getting anywhere with them out there. And, you know, it just looks shady, as someone told me. It just looks shady out there, and I have to agree with them. It looks bad. So, I am 100% behind this.
Alderman Verbic?
What is the rationale for the property owners not to maintain the drives? In my view, that's only a benefit to their business, more welcoming to their businesses. Is it really a financial issue? They just can't afford it, or they're choosing not to afford it?
It varies, parcel owner, parcel owner, but you're absolutely right. We thought, especially with our second appeal, it was shamelessly directed at their own self-interest. There seems to be, as those potholes grow, less traffic in that subdivision, so that would seem to count at the cash register, but, so I don't have an answer to your question, but I think I agree with Alderman Smith and with you that something needs to be done, and we can't, we don't have a budget to go out and do that, and then if we do that, then we should move across the street to Target, and then we should move down the road, back down the road, going south to any variety of things on Sycamore Road, South Fourth Street, wherever. We have to do it equally judiciously.
You know, I'm really disappointed. I, you know, we want to be as business-friendly as we possibly can, but when we have our constituents who call our aldermen, and call the mayor, and call staff, and say, "When I drive to this particular shopping center, and my car gets, you know, like that," what can we do? And, you know, this is almost like a last resort. We don't want to do it, but we may have to do it. And I would hope that the response is less than what your initial indication is that it might be. So...
We'd like to, at this point, ask the council, have maybe more conversation to, tonight, authorize us to proceed to the public hearing.
Right.
Which gets us to the step where we can hear what they have to say. The city attorney will be there. I'm sure there'll be some other attorneys in the room, and I'm not, we're there in those...
Yeah. I look forward to that. Alderman Morris?
I think we absolutely have a responsibility to our community to take care of it, and I'm very proud to be a part of a council that would consider a policy this aggressive to protect our citizens from this.
Alderman Smith?
City Manager, is it, I know there was a street light that was hit, I'm going to guess, five, six years ago, over near First Midwest Bank that was never repaired. I mean, I know, I think code looked at that on open wires, et cetera. Would that be included in this? I mean, to the repairs, some of those light infrastructures that they just leave bare for our citizens?
Well, we could go further. As I mentioned in the background, I've only identified the roadway system. I wasn't aware of that, but on the whole...
It just came to mind.
I noticed the light, the light bulbs have changed. I hadn't noticed the poles that have been damaged, but maybe they just removed that and never replaced it. But they mow the retention ponds, and they do other things that need to be done there, so obviously, if we go further, it's a bigger number, and the chances of our getting 51% in our favor are diminished.
Yeah, I don't want to go further at this point.
No, I just remember a severe struggle, even to get them to cap the wiring so it wasn't exposed.
Okay, we have, Alderman Verbic?
Are we allowed through the SSA? You know, we have a number of them in the city of DeKalb, and the amount has remained flat, so as the cost of doing business has increased over the years, I'm talking about, in particular, Ward 6 and the Knowles, for example, taking care of the maintenance for cul-de-sacs and that kind of thing. We've had the same amount, even though the cost of doing that work has gone up. Are we allowed to add in a CPI or some type of a percentage each year to graduate that rate, to keep it in line with the cost of doing business?
I think there are two things. One, we should look at those other SSA numbers. And if we're doing our job correctly, and they'll ask us this in a public hearing, we should be doing a careful engineering assessment every year. Here's the condition of these roads. And if you looked in the background, we weren't heavy-handed, I didn't think. There were some years, like after the first year, we proposed, there are things that really have to get fixed now, but after some of that milling and resurfacing and other repairs, crack filling and so forth, next year will be substantially less, but then over a period of five years, 10 years, it grows up again, and so, we have to, every year, justify an amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Perkins?
So, in the backup detail, what's the difference between the green piece and the blue piece?
Okay. I don't have it in front of me, but I think at the top of that spreadsheet, there's a green.
Uh huh.
That, those are the costs that are involved in what we're proposing here. There are some other things that we could do, but we didn't do.
Right.
And we would present that to them to show, "Look, this is, we could have gone further here, but this is, we feel a reasonable start."
What's the blue piece? The blue piece is significantly different values, you know, so...
Yeah, that includes everything, retention pond, parking lots, mostly parking lots, probably.
So, it's a scope thing, really?
Yeah.
The first one is just...
The REA seems to be working there. They're taking, they may not be quick, but they're repairing. I guess it's more obvious to them, those are their customers that are going to repair that lot.
But the green piece refers to road maintenance primarily, for the common areas where the blue refers to everything.
I believe there are six, I think it goes from 1 to 6, or A to F, or something like, and, yeah, and they're marked on that map.
Got it. Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Since this motion passed, since this motion passed... Since this motion passed on, since this motion passed on first reading, and knowing that we're going to have a public hearing in a couple of meetings, is it advisable to waive the second reading and pass the ordinance tonight? Okay, I would entertain a motion to waive second reading.
I'll move it.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That ordinance is approved, and I look forward to the public hearing in a couple of weeks. Something happened tonight that has not happened in the three and a half years that I've been mayor and a number of us have been together, and that is that I had speaker request forms for public participation, which we try to get up towards the front of the meeting so that people have the chance. I didn't feel it would be appropriate for me to, in the middle of our resolutions, to go to the speaker request forms and let those folks speak, because we have people here who were here for the other resolutions and ordinances. And I would hope the council would agree with my judgment there. Having said that, what I'd like to do, if the council approves, I do have two folks who would like to speak to us tonight, and I would like to have your permission to go ahead with that. The first person who would like to speak is Emil Scales. Emil, if you'd go to the podium, please, and try to keep your remarks to three minutes or less.
Good evening. How y'all doing tonight?
Good evening.
I want to thank y'all for taking the time out to hear my community, where I'm coming from. I want to thank you for hearing my pastor. He speaks, he speaks great, you know, fine. Three things: law enforcement accountability, and just from my own experiences, like, since I've been out here back and forth to DeKalb, 1996, I've had some instances with law enforcement that made me feel like I was being harassed. I mean, like, a couple of times I've had to call him, I was being questioned like I was the suspect. You know what I mean? And so my question to you all, and after Joe got done speaking, I was looking for that there would be some kind of address to the situation that he was speaking on. And you guys went right on to, you know, business as usual, which surprised me. I don't, I'm not used to coming to city council meetings, so I don't understand how all this worked. But I really would like to hear something, I'm sure some of my other fellow community members would like to hear something, as to like a plan of action, or something you guys plan on doing about police brutality, you know, because it doesn't just happen to him, it happens to many, myself, people in my community, my neighbors. I got sons and daughters coming up behind me, nieces and nephews. I mean, do y'all have a plan in action? Is there more training for the police officers? I mean, what you guys going to do? And thank you.
Thank you, Emil. Tierra Huggins. Is Tierra still here? Okay, no. I'd like to speak to your question, Emil, in my communications, which is right before the end of the meeting, which is only going to be five minutes or less, unless one of our aldermen has a lengthy communication report. At this point, we are at reports and communications, and this allows each of our city council members to report or communicate any thoughts that they might have, and we'll start with our first ward alderman, Carolyn Morris.
Thank you. I do have something to say. I just wanted to acknowledge Pastor Joe Mitchell's comments this evening. I wanted to recognize that the community present tonight apparently supports his sentiments, and I want you to know that I see you, and I hear you, and I will listen to you. And I can give you my phone number, if you want to take it down. It's (267) 221-7693, and it is on the city website, so it's there, and you can email me there, too, and you can ask me for it afterward. I hear Emil, and I hear you guys, and I don't, I don't know what to do. And this is a big issue, and it's really important to all of us on council. And it's not our habit to respond immediately, and I know it felt like just the wrong thing after Pastor Joe Mitchell spoke, to not respond to him, but it's our habit to not respond. And we have, so we typically just don't say anything. And it felt terrible. It was horrible. But I hear you, and I want to hear you, and that's all I have to say.
Alderman Fanouken?
I also want to welcome the members of the New Hope Community and those who are not usually here at council. I'd like to recognize Reverend Mitchell Senior, the senior pastor. He and I go way back, what, 35 to 40 years now? Something like that. And a number of other people in the audience that I know and recognize. And we do hear and listen to what you have to say. As you've heard, yes, the state's attorney did not indict anybody, but as you've also heard, that the internal police investigation continues, and at this point, I'd like to let that play out its course. I'd also like to comment on, I'm a little bit disappointed by the removal of the school choice proclamation from our agenda this evening. I really don't understand why it was removed. All it states is that we want to give, we recognize the fact that parents have a choice in schools, whether it is the public or the private schools that are available here in DeKalb and the area. And if it was at the request of the teachers' union, I'm really disappointed in them, if they're the ones that asked for this removal. Thank you.
Bill, I will give you an answer as best I can when I get to my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Smith?
No report.
Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman McAdams?
As council liaison to the Human Relations Committee, I want to speak specifically to the issue with Pastor Mitchell. Pastor Mitchell attended our meeting in November, and there was a meeting between Pastor Mitchell and the chief of police. Then we got caught up in the holidays, and unfortunately, the problem with government is sometimes it moves too slow. And so that's one of those situations where we are awaiting another meeting, we're going to sit down and talk about it again. These commissions do not move quickly, so the immediacy of that doesn't, it doesn't feel right. But we are working on some sort of situation where residents can come in and review the policies and procedures, and that residents can be aware of the way that the police department is trained. The chief spoke last time to the amount of training that they're doing and different programs, and we've, all in the Human Relations Commission have approved that they go ahead with any trainings that are available to us. So that's something that, it's unfortunate that it doesn't resolve quickly to an emotional rate, our emotional satisfaction, but it is definitely moving, it is definitely something that we're looking at, and it has not been pushed under the rug or ignored.
Thank you, Scott. Alderman Verbic?
Just want to thank my colleagues sitting up here with me tonight. Again, it's our discussion. You come in, I come into the meetings, and really keeping an open mind, and certainly the TIF incentive was one tonight, where talking with residents and those that are interested, I gained a lot of perspective, but I gained a lot of perspective tonight about knowing that the project won't go forward if the incentive is not 40%. So it's good for me to learn that. And to our community, we are one community. Your community is our community, so please keep in touch with how we can improve it for everyone. Thank you.
Alderman Favor? No report. First of all, I'd like to respond to Alderman Fanouken's question of why we remove the, I want to, the proclamation, School Choice Week, January 26 to February 20, off the agenda. Last Friday, after I noticed that we had the school choice proclamation on the agenda once again, and we did this last year, and it basically was from a national school choice committee, and at that point, we had a conversation, we, meaning Ruth Scott, who puts together the agenda logistically and sends it out on Thursdays, and city manager Nicholas, that I felt that while I was comfortable with this particular proclamation, because it had some local tie-in, I said, "Moving forward, let's do proclamations that have some meat in them, that have some local relevance, if you will, whether that be a welcoming community proclamation, or whether that be a proclamation endorsing something downtown." So on Sunday morning, I get a text and an email from Alderman Morris, asking that I take that off the agenda, which in and of itself is something enough to remove something from the agenda. Today, I received a call from Jamie Craven, the superintendent of schools at District 428, and he felt uncomfortable that the city was endorsing school choice. And I said, "Jamie," I said, basically what I was doing is simply trying to look at a proclamation that seemed to make sense, because we do have school choice in this community. We have a parochial choice, we have a good organized homeschool organization, and, but having said that, and having an alderman and the superintendent of schools ask that we remove this, I removed it. We can put it back on, we can talk about school choice, we can have an honest discussion, if in fact, it is the role of this city council to talk about school choice. So Alderman Fanouken, I don't know if that satisfies you, obviously, it did not satisfy you that it was taken off the agenda. I hope my explanation is such that at least you understand where I was coming from.
I do understand where you were coming from and why you removed it at your discretion.
Thank you. I genuinely appreciate the response of citizens who take the time to appear before city council. Tonight, I'm especially gratified by the large contingent of folks who made their presence concerning our police department. The men and women of our DeKalb Police Department will continue to work very, very hard to maintain the trust that has been given to them, as they serve and protect the citizens of the city of DeKalb. A special thanks to Reverend Joe Mitchell for his efforts in coordinating the visit tonight of so many folks who came forward. To the gentleman, Emil Isit, who asked our question, I think Bill perhaps answered the question, that this internal investigation is still going forward, and at this point, I think it would probably be inappropriate for this city council to address any specifics of that particular incident. However, having said that, I agree with what has been alluded to a number of times tonight. We are one community. We are deeply concerned when folks feel that this city is not doing something that adequately serves and protects them. And as a group, and I think as individuals, while we may have different strokes by different folks, if you will, I would hope that this council is considerate and will listen to each and every citizen who calls, whether that be on garbage disposal, whether that be on snow removal, whether it be on incidents that occur within our police and fire departments, or any of our departments for that matter. We have a professional staff, we have a professional city manager who works day and night and weekends for the betterment of this community. And once again, I commend Bill. So having said that, we welcome comments, we welcome calls, and Carolyn gave you my, her phone number, it's on the website, but I have business cards right here, and anybody who'd like it has not only my office phone, but my cell is there. So I would appreciate, don't call me at 3:00 in the morning, I may let it ring through. However, anybody, anybody who would like to speak to me at any time, call me. I had a call, I had two calls this weekend. One was on snow removal. I know Tracy Smith, and the snow removal concern happened in his ward. We were back and forth, not only with our public works department, but with our city manager, and with the lady who was complaining about some of the issues that she felt were happening in her ward. So I'm not begging off on responsibility, believe me. I'm just simply saying that we work very, very hard, and as a council, I would hope that we will continue to work hard to serve the residents of this city. So thank you for your comments. Now, one other thing, for the benefit of the public, let it be known that the evaluation process for our city manager is well underway. Each alderman has completed his or her evaluation. I've read each and every one, and an overall synopsis that we have put together will be shared with council, which will share those results with Mr. Nicholas at an executive session in February. But that process went very, very well, and I thank each and every one of you here for getting those evaluations back to me. Now, having said that, city manager Nicholas, any report?
Just a brief report, and I don't know if Tom is in the audience tonight. I don't think Tom Cleveland is here tonight, but I regret to say that Tom Cleveland, who has been our airport manager for 18-plus years, offered his letter of resignation last week. He is not retiring. He has been given an opportunity, which he says is a great opportunity for himself and his family. He is moving at the end of February to be deputy director at the Page Airport, and we certainly wish him well, just as we are disappointed that we would be losing him. And tomorrow night's an airport advisory board meeting, and I will be there. I've talked to all the, I've notified the council, I've talked to each member of the airport board, and we won't talk much about the process from there, but I want to assure them that we're going to be working to get a worthy replacement.
Anything else, Bill?
I should say one thing.
Sure.
Just a heads up to people in the community, or just, I guess it's a request for cooperation. In our city code, there is an expectation that within 48 hours of the onset of an event, a snow event, your residential and your commercial sidewalks, the property you own, will be cleaned off. Now, particularly with the type of storms we've had recently, and much of last year as well, if you waited 48 hours, you would need a steel shovel and a scraper to make any kind of dent on your sidewalks, and the snow would be compacted, be ice filled and so forth. So we just hope that people, as they get a chance, and last weekend's snow was particularly very challenging, and the plows coming through lifting wet snow like that, they were making snowmen at the bottom of almost every driveway. And I can attest that I live right at the corner of a collector and a residential, and I got a lot of that. Thank you very much, Andy Rye. It took me a half an hour with a scoop shovel, some of you remember what that is, the old coal shovels, just to clear the first two feet of the bottom of my driveway. So I am aware, and we do our best, and the plows do their best, and they're out there oftentimes 10, 12 hours a stretch, in all kinds of rain, ice, back to snow, back to rain. Nevertheless, please clean your sidewalks. Thank you.
Alderman Fanouken was mentioning his long relationship with Leroy Mitchell, and Leroy and I go back at least that many years, perhaps more, and we were talking before the meeting tonight, the fact that our age has gotten us to the point where we talk about our medical conditions. You know, "What's happening with you? How many medications are you taking?" So that was heart attack snow last weekend, Leroy. So you and I, we have to watch ourselves if we get out there and shovel even a little bit. So I appreciate that. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we are now moving to item number, and this is an executive session. I'm calling for an executive session to do the following: approve to hold an executive session to discuss pending or imminent litigation as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2 C11; and number two, approval to hold an executive session to discuss personnel as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2 C1. I would ask a member of the council to provide a motion to hold an executive session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Smith, that we recess into executive session. Any comments before we have the roll call?
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yep.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes? Eight yes?
Motion passes, we are now in recess for executive session. Thank you very much.